Welcome to the May twelfth, twenty twenty-five public work session of the Cornwall School District. We are eight board members present this evening. I remind our members and a viewing guests that we are conducting this public meeting in person and streaming it live from LGI at the Cedar Crest High School. The link to review live stream meeting is located on the school board meeting page of the CLSD website. I ask everyone to please rise and do the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for being here. Since this is a public work session, at this time I'm going to turn the meeting over to Dr. Demensik.
Thank you, Mr. Zug, and once again, welcome to everyone here in attendance and to anyone who is joining us online as well. This is our public work session, so a little bit different format than we have at our regular board meetings. The administration will be presenting items to the Board of School Directors for discussion, consideration, and review. And at that time, at the conclusion of the meeting, we also entertain any questions from anyone who is with us about any of the items that are discussed this evening. Before we do begin and we begin with our presentations, I do have a few updates to share. This past week was National Teacher Appreciation Week, so of course, thank you to all of our staff. We have also, as everyone is grateful, concluded PSSA testing for this year, so that's a relief for everyone. And of course, the end-of-year events and all our concerts are, this is that season throughout the district, we have so many things that are taking place on a daily basis. In fact, this Sunday is the High School Spring Orchestra Concert at two PM. We do have the Senior Awards Program tomorrow night here in our auditorium, and then we also host the Excellence in Education event for the county here in our high school auditorium. We've done that for a number of years, that's Wednesday. Anyone out there listening, if you have a kindergartner and haven't gotten them registered, please do so. We're trying to get those numbers and those counts in place as we plan for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, and there is information available on our website for that. We have a lot of items that'll be discussed at this night's work session. These include the renovations and stadium facility improvements updates. We just actually had a groundbreaking for the high school renovations and additions at four PM this afternoon, and then also for the stadium renovations and additions. Both of these bids, all the bid awards for these projects were awarded back in April. So with that, we are going to see a lot of people and a lot of contractors on site. Everyone will have clearances and badges, but we're going to see a lot of contractors as we'll have three projects running simultaneously. We will be finishing up the Falcon Connector into June, and of course, we'll be starting the stadium renovation and additions, and then of course, the high school project as well. So we'll finish that with the connector soon because we will have that for twenty-two classrooms next school year. So we also will be approving our list of twenty twenty-five Cedar Crest High School graduates as well, so commencement is just a few weeks away, so looking forward to that. Always a very nice event. Now, we do have a number of presentations this evening because we have so many presentations that we like to recognize in May, so we're going to have those presentations first and then we'll move on to our discussion items. So we're going to start with Mr. Thomas, who will present the Cedar Crest High School Quizbowl Team.
It's easier than moving the mic stand up. All right, guys, you want to come up here? Good evening, everyone. It's with great pleasure that I present to you some of the members of the Cedar Crest High School Quizbowl Team. These players have put in a great deal of time and hard work into their achievements from this past year, and their parents have been an instrumental part of their success, encouraging them and steering them in the right direction to become the people that they are today. Please join me in acknowledging our players and their parents. First, we have Vset Mang, who is a senior, and to his right, Nathan Meng, who is a junior, and their parents Kathy and Ravi, who are back there in gr-- you got the memo for the green. Well done. And then to my left, we have Christopher Martinez Mejia, who is a tenth grader, and his parents Raoul and Alvia. I'm always worried about that. Your mom is here. Give everybody a wave. All right. Unfortunately, there are several other players who have gotten a lot of time on the A-Team this year that couldn't make it tonight due to various other commitments, baseball games and volleyball matches and those kinds of things. But I'd like to give them a brief mention while I go through Devon Yang, who's a tenth grader, and his parents Yan Zhu Ren and Bin Yang. Tyler Toscano, who's an eleventh grader, and his parents Darlene and Alex Toscano. Matthew Peelin, who's a ninth grader, and his parents Tim and Dora Peelin. And Ahmed Hassanin, who is an eleventh grader, and his parents Moharam Hassanin and Manal Abuhiif. We're primarily here tonight to recognize the team for their Lancaster Lebanon League Championship. After a regular season in which they went thirteen and two to win their division of the league, they entered the playoffs as one of the top contenders to win the league title. After going five and oh in the playoffs, including a five hundred and fifty to one hundred and twenty-five demolition of a fourteen and one Elizabeth Town team that had the highest scorer in the league, it was over with eight toss-ups to go in the match, which is, the earliest it can possibly be over is with ten toss-ups to go in the match. It was over with eight toss-ups to go in the match. After that, they met Mannheim Township, stunner, Mannheim Township in the finals, with Township needing to win two matches in a row while Cedar Crest only needed to win one, since we had already beaten them earlier in the playoffs. We had the advantage final. I'm telling you this from my perspective, late in the game, it looked pretty bleak for us. We were down three hundred and ten to two hundred and seventy-five with only two questions left in the match, and I really didn't want to get to that second game of finals because that just, you get a little nervous when you get into that spot. But these guys took down the last two questions and earned enough bonus points for us to end up winning three hundred and twenty-five to three hundred and ten and take home Cedar Crest. This is now our third Lancaster Lebanon League title. It's very hard to win the Lancaster Lebanon League in Quizbowl, one of the best Quizbowl leagues in the country. So that's primarily why we're here. I want to add a little bit more. This was one of five times that these guys earned a Nationals qualification this year. In order to earn a Nationals qualification, you have to place high enough at a recognized, nationally recognized tournament. Lancaster Lebanon League was one. These guys also finished fifth in a field of twenty-eight, a ridiculously strong field at Westchester Henderson in November. Finished second out of forty-eight teams at the Penn Manor Quizbowl Tournament in December, losing in the finals to Westchester Henderson. Finished first out of eighteen teams at the Carlisle Quizbowl Tournament in April. And also, just last week, week and a half ago, made Cedar Crest's third consecutive appearance in the finals of the Pennsylvania State Academic Competition, finishing third in a ridiculously close final that ended with a score of ninety-five to ninety to eighty-five among the three teams in the finals. So we were literally two questions away from another state title. Really close. Great job. All right, so these guys, as well as Devon and Tyler and Ahmed, are going to be competing against three hundred and thirty-five other teams from across the United States in the High School National Championship Tournament, which happens over Memorial Day weekend in Atlanta, Georgia. If you'd like to, I always throw that plug in there, you can follow them, you can go to the naqt.com website, and they've made it really, really user-friendly over the years where the day of the tournament, if you go there, it will literally say, you know, click here to find, you know, schedules by team, and you can follow along with them. They're going to start playing at three o'clock on Saturday of Memorial Day weekend, and then they have three more preliminary rounds on Sunday morning between eight and eleven thirty, and hopefully, they will qualify for the playoffs, which begin at two o'clock on Sunday. That's kind of our goal. And finally, I'd like to just say, and I know that he hates this, but I'm going to say a little bit more about one of these guys in particular. I want to give a little extra recognition to Vset, who's the only senior who we have playing on this year's team. When Nationals rolls around, he's going to end his time playing Quizbowl here as the second-leading scorer in school history, having averaged over sixty-five toss-up points per game throughout his high school career, which is an insane number. We've only had two players average more than thirty-five points per game for their high school career, so. And he has scored over ten thousand toss-up points in matches in his time here. I mean, it's a mind-boggling number. I looked these up earlier today, I was like, wow. And by the time Nationals come to a close, he will actually have answered more than a thousand toss-ups correctly in recognized NAQT competition, which is awesome. And all these underclassmen who are coming back, you know, we've got a very promising start, but there's some pretty big shoes to fill, and I'm glad to have gotten a chance to work with them over the last four years. And as it comes to a close, I'm sad, but also happy to see you move into your next phase of life. All right? There's our Cedar Crest Quizbowl Team.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas, and congratulations to all of our students who are recognized. What a fantastic year. Always impressive to hear about the accomplishments of our Quizbowl Team. The next recognition that we have this evening will be from Mr. Stoddard, who will present our state qualifying Middle School Technology Student Association, TSA, students.
I'm here to introduce the Middle School Technology Student Association Team. Nine, we've, we're lucky this year, we had nine students qualify for the state conference. If you could just stand up when I, I have Jamie Berea, who's here with his mother. I have Alexis Brubaker, who's here with her mother and father. I have Max Joffe, who's also here with his mother and father. I have Canaan Ashamov, who's here with his mother. Who am I missing here? Oh, Alan Liu, who came with me. And Lucian Hoffman, who's here with his mother, correct? Okay, so these guys did amazing. You don't have to stand up if you don't want to.
Do you have any more out there? I think you might have one more there, Mr. Stoddard.
Did I miss one? Oh, I'm sorry, and Michael Kuntz. This is, this is why I wanted them to all sit together, because he's also here with his mother and brother. So this year, we had nine qualify for states, which is the highest number we've had in a long time. Mr. Reed will tell you here in a second or so how, just, and we say this every year that we present, how amazed we are with these kids. They are, and one thing that's important to understand is Technology Student Association is the biggest student-run organization in the nation. So when we say student-run, when we go to states, they, the students run the conference, and they are responsible for getting to events, for participating in events, for checking, for everything. And just to watch these kids do all those things on their own without, I don't want to admit it, but much guidance, it's amazing. And Mr. Reed and I both said, as, you know, when we retire, we want to go and judge because we believe in this organization that much. We feel, you feel comfortable when you go to the state conference knowing that our older generations are in good hands, so. Mr. Reed?
Right, thank you, Mr. Stoddard.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Bob Reed, and I'd like to recognize my co-advisor, Sarah Hartruska, for the TSA High School Team. Going to talk a little bit about TSA and what it is before we introduce our team. But TSA, Technology Student Association, we've always talked about it as being a problem-solving thing, and these guys that we have are experts at problem-solving. They're very good. This year at the competition, we had over seventy-five events, and these guys were competing against nearly two thousand other students in these events that they were doing. So for them to do well is really saying something. Some of the events that we do, they're kind of based in, there's some graphic arts, which we'll show you tonight, a lot to do with computers, either fixing the computer or using it, such as CAD. There's a lot of racing events with cars, there's some flying events with planes, there's even competition on a Robert's Rules of Order. And then, so these guys compete in events that are either prepared ahead of time, or there are also ones that they get on the spot when they get to the competition. So I'd like to introduce my team, if you guys would stand up. First, Ryan Brophy. Ryan Brophy is one of our team members. We had Ashley Wick, who is here with her parents Krista and Anders, and Alexandra Drake, here with her mother, Michelle. So this is the team that we took with us, and they did very well. Last year when I was here, I was kind of hopeful, a little bit disappointed because we didn't make it on stage. To make it on stage means that you are the top ten in the state, and it really is something great to be on stage. So let me tell you what these guys did. So the people you see standing here, Ryan, Alex, and Ashley, competed in something called On-Demand Video, which is an on-the-spot event. You get, when you get there, they tell you what you have to do and make a video of, and you have forty-eight hours, forty-eight hours to complete the video and turn it in. And I am very proud to say that their promotion of the resort coffee shop got them up on stage with a ninth, with a ninth-place finish. Sit down, it's just you. Hold on, you two aren't done yet. Ashley and Alex, they made a second trip to the stage with their board game design. They designed a board game that you would normally play, did very well. They also made a third trip to the stage with their Solar Sprint Car, a car that is powered by solar energy and it's just kind of like a drag race down, down, down the line. Alex, you can sit down. Ashley made her fourth trip to the, to the stage. She got a respectable sixth place in what's called pin design. Now, one of the things, as you can see from Ryan's coat, there are pins that are designed that if the first-place person wins, that is the pin that goes on to next year, and the kids can buy them. And the money, by the way, promotes TSA and also the American Cancer Society. And Ashley got up on stage for that. She got a respectable sixth place in that, so, very good, very good. Okay, Ryan, jump back up again. Ryan, we can talk a little bit more about you. Ryan put in a lot of hard work in something called PA Logo Design. Much like the pin, it's something that a design, the first-place winner gets the T-shirt printed for everybody for next year's event. And Ryan did very good, got his second trip to the stage with a seventh, seventh place. And I don't, not, hold on, not yet, there's something that he didn't get to the stage too, but I just want to talk about. He was also involved with something called TSA Flight. You build a plane that is powered by a rubber band that takes off, circles, and lands, and even though you didn't quite make it up there for that, I mean, I think we both felt like the first time it actually lifted off, I think, what, we get three seconds? It lifted off and landed, we felt like the Wright Brothers. It weren't quite twelve seconds, but we kind of thought, yes, because this is the first time in my career that we've had one actually take off and land, so I was very excited about that. So congratulations to there. So I invite you, when we go to our break, that we brought along some of the things that they did, if you take a look at that, and great group, it was a great group. I have some great things to say about them when we're talking amongst ourselves later, but, and I really don't want to say, didn't want to, thought about, didn't know if I wanted to say this, but this is the best group I've ever taken to TSA. They were, they were awesome, but thank you for having us tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Thank you, Mr. Reed, and Mr. Chuska, Mr. Stoddard, and, you know, it's really, it's really neat to see how this program has grown over the years and just the achievements that we've had. And of course, having our middle school involved provides the opportunity for students to learn and then get involved in our high school, it's just a, it's been a wonderful thing to see. So congratulations to all of our students, and thank you all for your efforts as well. So at this time, we are going to take a short break so that our board directors can come out and greet you, and then we'll convene back into our discussion items for our meeting. So we'll just take a break at this time.
Yeah. Yeah.
All right. Okay, thank you, everyone. We're, we're going to continue on with our, with our May work session here, so, we will move into our discussion items at this time, and we will go into buildings and grounds. Mrs. Hens?
Yes, thank you. Our first item is Falcon Connector update. I have a change order, very small change order regarding a solid surface at the top of one of the stairwells in the Falcon Connector. It's a little less than fourteen hundred dollars, so I'll ask for your approval on that. And then I also have in the next several slides, just updated pictures of the connectors really coming together nicely. This is a part of Fidavia report that they put together every month, and we'll have that posted on our website after tonight. So, if Jason wants to just slowly go through these slides, they're also on the Fidavia report.
Yeah, we can do that anytime, any, anytime you want to go through it, we can do it.
Sorry, I'm trying to push, but probably you're going to be able to watch.
Absolutely, yeah. Yeah, you know, every, every week, I try to get up there and you can see that there's so much happening at this point to the interior of the building, so, but, but we can certainly talk about that. We'll arrange a time after this for anyone who wants to do that. This is from the middle school.
We are looking, we are looking at doing an opening later on this summer.
Yes, we are, we are going to have the, the open house for it. It will be on, what do we say, Amy, July twenty-sixth?
July twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth, Saturday, July twenty-sixth will be the open house for it. And then we're going to be in the process of getting everything moved in, moved in that week to get it ready to go, because we have furniture coming right around that time as well.
Is that the last one? The next item is to just give you an update on the high school and stadium renovation projects. We did just have groundbreaking today for both projects. All contracts, contractors have been notified to proceed. We also have some activity then hopefully starting next week. And then the stadium completion is scheduled for August of 2026, and then the high school completion is scheduled for spring of 2028. The next item is an item that happened three years ago. We had a three-year agreement, and this year, we are doing a one-year agreement on Siemens maintenance. This covers preventative maintenance, also with, just the technology alone, you need somebody else to be able to assist with the systems. It also includes training, making sure that our staff is well-trained in the systems to be able to manage the HVAC systems. One change to this contract is we did increase onsite visits from one to two times per month. Mr. Brickley, you believe that it would be better to have that support coming in and also assisting and training. Covers five of the seven buildings, those that have Siemens, which is all the buildings except for the middle school and Ebenezer at this time. And then we also are adding the Falcon Connector, so that is number seven of the buildings. We're going to ask for your approval to renew this agreement at one year, which will take you till next June, at a cost of sixty-three-five. It is a significant increase. Again, we are changing some of the services that are being provided. So, this will be on for next Monday. The next item is a, we go out to, for quotes for, for this as the trash collection. Quotes were requested from seven different providers and we received one response. So, we are looking at a five-year contract beginning in July. The cost for twenty-five, twenty-six is seventy-one thousand dollars. Budget to budget is an increase of twenty-eight percent, and then after that is five percent increase. We did come off of a five-year contract, so that kind of, I mean, the adjustment in inflation over the last five years has changed a lot. So, we are going to ask for your approval of this five-year contract with Casella. We, the next item, we kind of, we're looking at the elementary schools and realized that we need to do some repairs for our stage, staging, the rigging, the apparatus at three of our elementary schools, Cornwall, Ebenezer, as well as South Lebanon. A couple of details, the project includes maintenance of the rigging system, change, just a review of the whole system, and then if necessary, and then as well as the curtain replacements. Some of them are, have, are aged, but that would be a part of this, this project. Project is scheduled for August and September because we have to wait until the curtains come in to be able to do all of it at once.
Just for the record, these are really big curtains.
(laughing)
So, I've been told.
They are also fireproof, like they, fire resistance, I should say, so those are requirements.
Yeah, and they're actually, you know, part of this work needs to be done too because of, you know, as we look at our insurance policies and making sure that these things are safe, because this is part of regular inspections that we need to do, so.
Yes, they are inspected on a regular basis.
So, part of this upgrading is something that we, we need to get done. It's time.
The next item is annually right now, this Act thirty-nine was put in place in 2018. It required schools to just talk about lead testing if you're not doing it. Well, I've, I've been doing both, I've not, we've only, we've also been testing as well as we talk about it. So, it requires one of the following, testing for lead in the drinking water. So it requires one of the following, testing for lead in the drinking water. And then if you're not, you are required to talk about it at a public work session or a public meeting. So Cornwall-Lebanon procedures is we test water annually every single year, testing multiple outlets each, in each building. And then we also change to different outlets in that building, within that building. So there is no action next week. This is just more of a, for your information. I think that concludes my section.
So the Buildings and Grounds items, obviously, you know, as I mentioned, we have a lot going on with the construction projects. Are there any questions about any of the items that Mrs. Hens presented? All right, thank you. We'll move next to Community Relations Curriculum and Staff Development. And I believe, Dr. Rackley, you're going to begin to kick us off with this section.
Good evening, everybody. It's nice to see you. I'm excited to come here and chat with you about Falcon Flex. Falcon Flex is our professional learning model that we use here in the Cornwall-Lebanon School District. It allows teachers to choose what professional learning sessions best meet their needs as individuals. Our catalog, Dr. Murray and I work really hard on our catalog and spend a lot of time going through applications, making sure our catalog is ready, and making sure that it aligns with the vision of the Cornwall-Lebanon School District. Our catalog opened on May first with almost three hundred professional development sessions that teachers could choose from to use their agency, to provide their own learning experiences. So kind of like a choose-your-own-adventure professional development. Our first courses begin the day after the last day of school, so our Falcon Flex Summit begins on June eleventh. It'll be June eleven, twelve, and thirteen. And then our second Falcon Flex Summit, which, they're almost like mini-conferences, where we try and concentrate as many courses as possible, so teachers can come and get many sessions and complete many of their hours all at one time. Our second Falcon Flex Summit is July twenty-nine, thirty, and thirty-one. But there are sessions offered in between there as well. They just might not have a partner course, or they might not be a full day of course offerings. But that's open and up and running, and we have teachers all signing up for, to complete their professional development hours. So we're excited to see Falcon Flex launch this summer. If I can roll into the next one, the next piece is our curriculum approvals. We have amazing staff here in the Cornwall-Lebanon School District. We have exceptional curriculum leaders who work so hard to facilitate this process. We've had excellent conversations in a K to twelve environment, which doesn't always happen. So we're, I think, helping our staff, helping each other as colleagues have a really good understanding of what's happening in each level. So we have curriculum leaders from the high school, meeting with curriculum leaders from the elementary school, who are also in the same room as people from, as curriculum leaders from the middle school. And I think that makes a huge difference as we start to build a really nice cohesive K to twelve curriculum. So what we have for you this evening is we have four departments that have completed their curriculum writing in the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And so tonight you'll see art. This was the first time that art has actually written curriculum in this new cycle. They were supposed to write last in 2020, and so we all know what happened in the spring of 2020. So they did not write in the spring of 2020, and so they really spent a lot of time having good vertical conversations, looking at their existing curriculum, looking at what we needed to talk about, where we had overlap, where we had gaps and holes. We needed some horizontal alignment across buildings, but also the vertical piece in a K to twelve manner. So there are nineteen courses for you to review. And I listed just a few of every department, just so you could see some of the vastness of the offerings that we provide here in the Cornwall-Lebanon School District. The next one is Technology Education. So Mr. Rita, Mrs. Hrtuska, and Mr. Stoddard are all part of Technology Education. What you will see tonight is you'll see our nine to twelve, our grades nine to twelve, Technology Education pieces. They had a really challenging task, because they needed to line up with the steel standards. So if you remember, technology and engineering are part of the new steel standards. And so they had a huge task of aligning their twenty-four courses to the technology and engineering standards, which go into effect on July one. But they did a great job working as a department. They're a fantastic department. And we offer twenty-four different tech ed courses, but that also includes seven additional family consumer science courses, because they're also part of our Technology Education Department here at the high school. So I just wanted to list some opportunities for you. So there are thirty-one courses that fall under Technology Education. Next is Computer Science. So in addition to Technology Education, we also offer eight Computer Science classes here at the high school. Two of them are in the Advanced Placement category, and then two of them are College and the High School courses. And they'll also be on for your approval next week. And last but certainly not least is the Music Department. The Music Department spent a lot of time working really well together to build, not again, the K to twelve language, but also the horizontal language across grades K through five in our four elementary buildings. They have twenty-seven courses for your approval that include general music and performing ensembles. I can't say enough about the curriculum leaders and how hard they worked with their departments to get all of these pieces together for you. But we're really proud of what we've produced, and I think it's a really cohesive, comprehensive look at the course offerings we have here in the Cornwall-Lebanon School District.
So obviously, that's a lot, a lot of pieces, a lot of reading material, a few time for it. But it's the culmination of all the work that Dr. Rackley's done with our curriculum leaders and our staff during the course of this year. This is the time of year where, of course, we, we reached that point, and it's ready for, ready to, final draft and ready to be put in place. So we're looking forward to it. Very proud of all their efforts, and thank you, Dr. Rackley, for all your efforts in coordinating that as well. Any questions? So we have a motion on to approve this, to put this on next weekend. We won't approve each course, though. We'll do it, we'll do it in groups by department, right? That'd be a lot of motions, so, yeah, we'll do, we'll do it in groups. All right, thank you, and thank you again, Dr. Rackley, for all your efforts in that. Okay, we'll move on. As I said, we just have a few weeks left in the school year here. Dr. Bosser?
Yes, good evening, everyone. For the Cedar Crest High School graduates, a class of twenty-twenty-five, the graduation will take place on Friday, June sixth. So you'll see there the listing of three hundred eighty-two students who will be graduating, plus also keep in mind that we had twenty-one students that participated in the ceremony that took place in late January. So we would be looking for approval next week of the list of graduates. Once again, the three hundred eighty-two for June, plus the twenty-one that had participated back in January. Next is the Cedar High School Agriculture Advisory Committee. So at the high school, we have, our Ag program is like a CTE program, so it's like a Career and Technical Education program that we're operating. So as part of that, we are required to have what's called an LAC or a Local Advisory Committee, which we actually participate under the umbrella of the CTC. And then part of that is we also have to have an OAC, an Occupational Advisory Committee. So the list that you see there contained is part of the OAC, and that team meets twice a year, once in the fall, once in the spring. So Mr. Groff and I were members of the committee as well. So usually he and I each attend one of those events. That just helps guide the programming and give them some insights into folks who are in the field as to what's the current trends and things, to help guide things as they go forward. So we would be looking for approval of that Agriculture Advisory Committee next week.
All right, any questions about any of those items?
The Ag Advisory Committee, they're all really good folks. It's an excellent group. I noticed you have two open spots. Who does the recruiting for the open spots?
That's primarily through Phil Hausner and Darren, and then Claudia is part of it as well, but, yeah, that team.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All right, we'll move on next to Extracurricular and to Use of Facilities.
Under the Extracurricular, we do have some Use of Facilities that will be needing approval next week. We have the Cedar Crest Boys Lacrosse Club to use the high school Sunday, May eighteenth, from twelve PM to four PM for the end-of-season banquet and awards. We also have the Boys Soccer Team to use the high school grass soccer fields, Sunday, August third, from twelve PM to eight PM for a three versus three youth soccer tournament fundraiser. We have a high school band using the high school on Sunday, September the twenty-first, from one PM to five PM for a combined concert with Keystone Band. And then we also have Middle School Drama Club to use the middle school, Sunday, November the ninth, from twelve PM to four PM for a matinee performance. We also have Camp Invention requesting to use Cornwall Elementary School again, Monday through Friday, June twenty-third to twenty-seventh, nine AM to three-thirty PM for the STEM camp. So those will be on next week for approval. And we do have a few overnight field trips that will need to be approved. We have high school students to Anaheim, California, Saturday to Thursday, June twenty-eighth to July third for FBLA National Leadership Conference. We also have high school students to Indianapolis, Indiana, Tuesday to Saturday, October the twenty-eighth to November twenty-twenty-five. I believe we missed the date there. I'll have to get that to you for next week. For National FFA Convention, and then also high school students to Disney World in Florida, Saturday to Thursday, March twenty-eighth, April second, for Music Department's performances. So those will also be on for Monday's approval. The next item is our annual bid process. We do this in-house for the athletic program for supplies and equipment. We did have bid openings for those supplies on April the tenth, and then we had five bids received, and we awarded three vendors totaling the twenty-four thousand three hundred ninety-two dollars. For that, we'll need your approval next week for that.
Okay, I believe that's all of our items under Extracurricular. Do we have any questions about any of those items? Okay, thank you, Mrs. Hens. We'll move on. You want to carry on then with Finance and Business?
Annually, PD certifies our tuition rates for elementary and secondary, and it is based on the previous year's annual financial report. So they did certify our elementary and secondary tuition. Elementary is twelve thousand three hundred and seventy, and secondary is thirteen thousand five hundred and twenty-eight dollars. And this is for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five year. And again, it's based on last year's, last fiscal year's information and last for your approval on those.
That's an annual item this time of year?
Another annual item is a fuel bid. We do use Keystone Purchasing Network, and this is for the twenty-five, twenty-six usage. And we participate with the heating, diesel, and as well as gas for our buses and vans. Bid award through KPN was done on May the first, and the vendor for the fuel oil and diesel is Petroleum Traders. We actually had it go down. The, the amounts went down, a decent amount, too. I thought I had it listed in here. It was like twenty percent. It went down. But yeah, that's unheard of. So we did a successful bid this, this year. And then for the fuel oil tank wagon, for those areas that you can't get into, they are a little higher, and that will go to Diesel Direct Mid-Atlantic. So we'll ask for your approval to, we'll ask for a ratification, because we actually have to sign the documents ahead of time and get the purchase orders out. Next item is also an annual item. This process takes a little longer. We actually asked for all of the buildings to submit what they want for next year back in the fall. But it is a very successful process. So for the art supplies, we had nine vendors approved forty-five thousand, and then the copier paper at fifty thousand nine hundred. And it pretty much was the copier paper that increased, probably, I believe it was like ten percent. But in the end, it's overall not too bad. The, the supplies came in a little lower. So we'll ask for your ratification on those items as well. Again, for the twenty-five, twenty-six year, we have depositories. We are currently utilizing First Citizens Community Bank. We're using Pennsylvania School District Liquid Asset Fund, also known as PISLOF, Pennsylvania Local Government Investment Trust, known as Pliget, Fulton Bank, and we also use Fulton Financial Advisors for our bond sinking funds. Next slide.
So we have a motion on for approval of those.
We will. I was going to go into a little more detail of that. With our depositories, we, all of the banking accounts, nine funds include those main funds, which is the general fund is the, is the biggest. We also have the Capital Reserve. Right now, with all of the construction, we have capital projects. We also have the Healthcare Fund, Food Service Funds, Student Activity Funds. It's twenty-five-plus accounts that we have to maintain and also reconcile. But we will ask for your approval next week on those depositories, so we're ready for next year. The next item is the Investment Program. This is also an annual review for the following year. We did update it based on our utilization of those different depositories that I just talked about. And it, it swings, it depends on who is offering the best rates is where we want to keep the funds, and then also like fees. We make sure that we're reviewing fees and seeing who's assessing fees and who isn't. Current investments, we do have short-term Pliget CDs and PISLOF specialty accounts that are earning interest. And we do have some long-term treasury, treasury investments as well. And those are approved monthly by you on the Treasurer's Report. Interest earnings, just a quick look at the general fund. This is a very volatile line item in the budget. Back in nineteen twenty, we were at four hundred and seventy thousand. Twenty-one, it dropped like significantly. And again, we have to watch that. We use these incomes for our operating operation. And then in twenty-two, twenty-three, we started earning a little more. But again, that could change at any moment in time. But that's just a result from us making sure that our funds are in the right accounts. And then again, we're always monitoring those. Wes Bencine also does a lot of that and looks and makes sure that we're earning interest on the money in the accounts. So we'll ask for your approval on the Investment Program next week. The next item is the Proposed Final Budget. We are going to go over the items here tonight, and then any changes we will look at, any changes we'll look at in June to approve as the final. So for the Proposed Final, our goals are always to sustain all of our district programs with those inflation pressures, a lot of pressures over the last five years. We provide necessary staff to meet the students' needs. We're all looking at those areas to make sure that we have those needs met. Maintain building renovations allocations to plan to fund current and future renovations. There's a lot of planning going in place here. It's not just for current. It's, it's also future you have to look at. And then, of course, staying within that, that Act One adjusted index. And this year, twenty-five, twenty-six is five percent. This is a summary of where we are projecting our, our amounts to come in at. Total expenditures is not quite a hundred and ten million. Total revenue we're projecting for next year is at one oh six, five. The difference is three point three million, so we do have to make up that shortfall. Use of the signed fund balance, we still have that retirement fund. Use of the signed fund balance, we still have that retirement fund that we're using. This will be the last year, '25-26. And then technology, we have a small portion of the expenditures that we're using our assigned fund balance. There is a plan in place that Dr. Murray has to be able to fund us in our rotations of our technology, so it stays updated. Needed to balance the budget is $3 million, and that is a 4.8% tax increase. With, I am happy to report that with the property tax relief allocation increase that we just received, it's going to be more equivalent to like a 3.9% increase to those median homeowners at $172.7. So they're looking at about a net $123 increase. It would have been $153, but with that increase, we're able to distribute that, and again, that's based on $172,700 assessed value. Does that make sense? So the millage that we were proposing is $19.269. I'll go a little more into detail on the property tax relief in a little bit.
That was going to be my question.
The proposed final, the numbers that we just put up there do include mandate expenditures, and one of the big ticket items is the employer retirement, that requirement for the employer to contribute. That is, of those expenditures, $14.5 million. The line item increased 107% over the last 10 years. So you're going from $7 million to 14.5. State provides 50% of that reimbursement, so when you're looking at the state revenue side of our budget, that includes 7.25% of the state contributing to that retirement. So we have to pay it all out 100%, and then we get reimbursed 50% of that later. The rate projected to be more than 38.5% in eight years, so we have to, again, plan ahead, look at those different factors that we are aware of, and that is over $38 for every hundred dollars that we pay to an employee. Next one is another mandated expenditure, which is the third-party cyber charter schools. Regular tuition right now is $12,663. Special education students is $30,000, so any student with an IEP, we would pay $30,000 to those cyber schools. Right now, again, this changes every month. We have enrollment of 182, so 182 of Cornwall-Lebanon students are enrolled in an outside cyber school. Total projected cost for '24-25, so in the expenditures that I mentioned earlier, about 3 million of that is cyber schools. That is not including our in-house cyber school. That is $322,000 over what we anticipated this year to be. Next year, we have to try to cover that, so we're looking at a total budget of a little less than 3 million to be able to cover that enrollment. The line item is increasing to $257,000. It's a 10% increase in this coming year's budget, and as of right now, we do not get any type of reimbursement for that. The next item, it may look a little familiar to you. We did cover what we call the debt service, so we are, the building renovations allocation plan, and that's pretty much what it is. You're looking out to see what our bond payments are going to be and making sure that we're going to meet that demand. So in the blue is the bond payments, based on what we have already have issued, as well as those future ones to be able to cover our renovations here on campus, as well as renovations at an elementary school, probably either Cornwall or Ebenezer, to be able to make sure that we have a plan in place to be able to continue doing this and keeping our facilities up to date. If you look at the, again, the blue, it represents your bond or loan payments, and then the gray is a variance that we are putting away into assigned fund balance. So if you look at the middle of the screen, there is a point in time where we have not met that, so we will take that money then and pay, help pay for those bond payments until the following year in '29-30, when our allocations per budget meets that demand. So instead of hitting it hard all at once, we have a certain amount going into this budget every year to meet that. Next is just overall, what are the major expenditures in this budget? These are the increases to the '25-26 budget, and as I've mentioned before, we're service-oriented, so a majority of our funds are going to go into personnel. So there is an increase of $4.7 million, but that includes, that is higher than normal, but that includes us going to full-day kindergarten. That's not only teachers going full-time, but also additional teachers, as well as support staff to be able to have in those classrooms. Also added special education classrooms and support, as I mentioned, we want to make sure that we're providing those needs to those kids. And then the employee healthcare also increased. Dr. Bensick, do you want to mention anything about the personnel?
No, it's, obviously, it's one of our most significant, it is the most significant part of our budget, and you know, many of these things, we had planned for the shift to full-day kindergarten, so we were prepared for that. We continue to see increased needs with students and families, students who are enrolling into the district. That's an ongoing challenge, of course, which is not, that's funded largely at the local level. That's a district of Cornwall, you know, Cornwall-Lebanon School District's responsibility. You can see underneath there to the IU and other placements. That's also additional costs for students that have significant needs, so that's not just us. All districts are having some of these challenges right now, as we try to make sure we serve all of our students and their families.
So as Dr. Bensick mentioned, the special education IU and other placements is a major expenditure increase, as well as transportation. We had entered into a contract to provide both bus and van through Bright Bill, and we had a 10-year contract, so we're kind of catching up with that, and it's only fair to be able to provide quality services when it comes to the busing. So that also is increasing, as well as the building renovations allocation, as I mentioned two months ago, I believe, and as well as that chart that I provide. We are putting into this operating budget $750,000 every year to be able to meet those demands in the future. Okay, next slide. This is just a quick view of our expenditures and the type of expenditures that are included in a school district, in our school district's budget. If you look at this year's final budget, so it's '24-25, and you look at the comparison to '25-26, there is no change, not at all. Percentage-wise, it's mostly about personnel, being able to provide those services to the students. Next slide is a quick look at our revenue. In our school district, a majority of our revenue come from local sources, and then the state source. If you look at '24-25's this year's versus next year, you'll see a slight change in the state versus local, and that's because of the Ready to Learn Grant that we're utilizing with our kindergarten classes. So that just shifted just a little bit. What we still don't know is the timeline for the state to pass a budget. So what does that mean? That means that we don't know what we're going to get with basic education funding, special education funding, and the Ready to Learn Grant I have out there is because the governor had mentioned additional Ready to Learn Grant funding, and we can't rely on that without it written somewhere, so I want to be able to have a responsible budget. It would be nice if we knew what we were getting, but we don't know at this time, so... And then also, federal subsidies through the title programs. We're still not sure what those allocations look like either, so we make an educated guess, or we keep it flat. The state property tax relief, as I mentioned earlier, we are, we receive, the taxpayers are receiving additional funds. This is pass-through funds, and this was from the property tax relief allocations, a part of the Relief Act, Act One of 2006. It provides property tax relief to approved homestead and farmstead properties. Now, I talk about this in November to give taxpayers a heads-up that if they do not have an approved homestead or farmstead, they're going to get notification from us letting them know, and they can apply for it. This is funds that are pass-through completely. We get it, and we send it right back out through the July 1 bill. We don't keep any of it, we distribute it all. So pretty much is taking the 2.2 million and distributing it out equally through all the taxpayers. The last 15, the first 15 years, it was at $121 for every homestead and farmstead that was approved. It went up to $151 or $152 several years ago when we received an increase, and then recently, like last year, we received $300,000. Again, you distributed over about $10,000 homestead/farmstead, that equals about $30 per taxpayer. So that brought it up to $181, $182, and now we are talking about another $300,000. So we're looking at about $30 per, and it would be a median assessed value. This would be a reduction in your bill again, so what we're looking at is $210. So anybody with an approved homestead or farmstead would receive, and again, I'm estimating at this point, about $210 reduction on your tax bill. March 1st.
Do they have to reapply, or if they're already approved?
You can apply now, it just would not be, yeah, until next year.
Now, once you're, once you are approved.
You're approved.
You're approved.
Yep.
So that stays if you've lived in your home for some time?
Now, if you would sell your property and move to another property in Pennsylvania, then you would have to reapply.
Yeah.
And every school district is going to be different. It all depends on how many homestead/farmsteads are approved in that area, and then they divide it over, just like I mentioned here, for Cornwall-Lebanon, it's 2.2 million to us, and then we take it and give it back out. It's like 10, I think we have 10,400 properties that are approved, so again, you would take that 2.2 and divide it over that, because everybody gets an equal amount, no matter what your assessed value is. Does that make sense? Okay?
Sure.
All right, just to give you a history of where Cornwall-Lebanon is, as you can see, since 2016-2017, we have been approving the resolution not to exceed the Act One index for us. And again, for the '25-26 year, we're at 5% is the max, and right now, we're asking for a 4.8%. This is a proposed final. We will work really hard and try to see if we can get that down, but there are a lot of needs in this, in this budget. So the timeline, just, I know you've seen it before, but just making sure that we're following this, and it's for my purposes as well, to make sure we're on par, is we review the information at the work session, and then next week, we're going to ask for your approval of that proposed final. Once that approval is done, we will put it out publicly in the PDE 2028, and it's the format that they have for us to enter the data into. And then from May 20th to June 9th, we will work on tweaking those numbers the best that we can for what we know, and then we'll present a final budget in June.
Okay, that's a lot of information under finance and business. It's that time of year, we are looking at our budget for next school year. Are there any questions about that? Obviously, we'd love for it to be a lower number.
Yes.
You know, I think, I think we all would, but we also want to make sure that we're, you know, we do that today, and what about tomorrow and the next year, and so on and so forth? That's, that's the dilemma that we always face in this, is that decisions made today have impacts that can be, it can be very long-term.
[inaudible]
So that's where we're at at this point. Again, we're going to continue to look at that and see if there's any other opportunities where we can, we can reduce that number. We'll see what happens between now and the June meeting. But we do need to have a motion on to approve the proposed final next Monday, and then we wait and see what, whether information we have until June.
Yeah.
Okay?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you. We'll go on to personnel.
Okay, well, good evening. Before I go on and read the personnel listing, just two quick highlights. Early February, we switched over to Red Rover as our hiring platform on the website, so we're finishing up just three and a half months of utilizing that program. That's gone very well. We are, starting July 1, also switching over to Red Rover for our absence management, so both of those programs will be contained within one platform, so we're excited about that as well. We're one of the earlier districts within the IU moving there, but I get the sense others are headed in that, a similar direction, specifically with the hiring side. I can't speak to the absence management as much, but we're happy so far with the program. Okay, so on to the personnel listing. The first is to accept the following resignations and retirements. So we have Seth McNally, 6th grade instructor, Cedar Crest Middle School, effective at the conclusion of the 2024-2025 school year due to resignation. Richard Boblitz, high school band assistant percussion instructor, 50%, effective April 23rd, 2025, due to resignation. Vicki Price, personal care assistant, life skill, 6.5 hours. South Lebanon Elementary School, effective April 25th, 2025, due to resignation. Anna McKenzie Leonard, instructional assistant, learning support, four hours, Ebenezer Elementary School, effective at the conclusion of the 2024-25 school year, due to resignation. Ronnie Philippi, district custodian, Cedar Crest High School, effective January 30th, 2026, due to retirement. Next, approve the following requests for leave. Caitlin Hostetter, 1st grade instructor, Cornwall Elementary School, childbearing and child-rearing leave, effective for the 2025-2026 school year. Mary Gardner Brant, school counselor, Cedar Crest Middle School, child-rearing leave, effective for the 2025-2026 school year. Olivia Macri, learning support instructor, Ebenezer Elementary School, childbearing leave, effective approximately September 16th, 2025. And last for that section, workers' compensation leave. Next, approve the following change in employment status. Allison Livering, from gifted instructor, Cornwall Elementary School, to a temporary assignment in the intensive management experience, in her board-approved salary plus a $5,000 stipend, effective July 1, 2025, for the 2025-2026 school year. Next, approve, ratify the employment of the following personnel, effective with the 2024-2025 school year, pending completion of pre-employment materials. Amber Moore, group leader, summer maintenance crew, at an hourly wage of $16. Emily Risser, Jennifer Young, Michael Garrett, and Anthony Moore, summer maintenance crew at an hourly wage of $15. Approve, ratify the employment of the following personnel, effective with the 2025-2026 school year, pending completion of pre-employment materials. Gillian Cheesum, long-term substitute music instructor, Ebenezer Elementary School, at a salary of $61,280. Christopher Latans, Falcon Summer Science Camp- Christopher Latans, Falcon Summer Science Camp instructor, at an hourly wage of $43. Belinda Martinez and Magdalene Stellar, lead teachers, English Language Development Camp, at an hourly wage of $43. Ann Anderson, Emily Ferguson, and Patricia Warren Average, instructors, English Language Development Camp, at an hourly wage of $43. Tammy Core, nurse, English Language Development Camp, at an hourly wage of $26.20. Janelle Weber, nurse, English Language Development Camp, at an hourly wage of $27.94. Veronica Vasquez, secretary, English Language Development Camp, at an hourly wage of $16.33. And the last item on the Personnel listing, approve the attached list of extended school year or ESY staff. That concludes the Personnel review.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Bosman. We're in pretty good shape for Personnel for 2526. We've got some, there's a few loose ends that we need to work on, but overall, we're, we're pretty good with professionals as well as classified.
Overall, we're in a very good, very good spot, yes.
Okay. Questions?
Yeah, can I ask, Allison Livering, the gifted instructor, what's the temporary assignment in the intensive management experience?
So this, go ahead. Okay, so this is something new that we had started. This would be the third year, so we had Emma Lebo in this position.
Oh, oh, oh.
And then currently, Tori Dissinger, and now Mrs. Livering.
Gotcha. Thank you.
How are we doing with teacher assistants, particularly in the area of special ed?
We've done pretty well. I know we have, there's still a couple out there, but as we're getting to this point in the year, just in terms of hiring, get people onboarding, that has sort of somewhat subsided for a little bit. You know, we were able to staff all of our ESY positions except for one PCA position. We have all of our teachers hired. We have all of our instructional assistants hired. We have one person we're still looking for, and then as we get into the summer, we will ramp up again the efforts to fill our spots for 2526. But we've done very well. I mean, there's still some openings, but from where we were, you know, from September and then mid-year, we really hit a bump where we got an increase, and we were able to secure some people and help solidify some of those positions, which was good.
We made some changes to that compensation for some of our special education teacher assistants as well. I believe we saw, we were able to secure a number of those following that. So I think that was a prudent thing to do at that time.
Yeah, that, the increase for the PCA's and IE, IAs for staff working in either autistic support or emotional support, that little bump, we were able to secure some staff that we were not able to before, so that was helpful.
Good, good.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll go on to Policy Management. And this first one here, this is a, this isn't one we usually have, so I'll let Mrs. Hens, if you want to explain this, this is the Joint Authority. Think about this though, too, is that we have a joint authority for the CTC, and we're talking about, with the CTC, about how when they get into a building project, the school code doesn't allow them to actually issue debts. You have to have a joint authority in place that manages that process. Well, this is kind of, basically kind of the same thing.
Yeah, so they are not allowed to own a building, you know, buildings, so they do the acquisition and the loans through the Joint Authority. So again, the IU has a Joint Authority, and all 22 membering districts have a representative on that Joint Authority. Our representative is Mr. Wes Benson.
Yeah, he's been doing that 50 years.
So the, the Joint Authority was established in 1980. Current 50-year term of existence is going to end in 2030, and for planning purposes, for be able to take out any type of loan if necessary, beyond that, they wouldn't be able to unless they would approve, we get this approved. So the resolution is, we're presenting to you is to extend the life of the authority to May 1st of 2075. Was able to say that smoothly. By amending the Articles of Incorporation, and it's just that line item where it has the term of when, when it would expire. But again, we will present that resolution. I gave you a draft that we'll, we want to have adopted on Monday, to be able to proceed and have it good until 2075.
Okay, so we have a motion on that. And then we have the CTC ballots.
Yes, I have paper ballots in my possession right now that I will distribute. The ballot has two items, two sections. One is for the CTC budget, which was approved already in April. So that would be a quick completion. And then also individually, you would vote on the officers, and again, they have Ruth Anne as president on, on that ballot, but it is you, not as a whole, but you individually voting. So I will distribute that after the meeting, and then just get that back to me as soon as you can.
And again, that's a routine item that we do do this year, this time of year.
Correct.
Okay. Board meeting dates. This is for 2526. We generally meet on the second, third Mondays of the month. We do have some exceptions to this. We do not meet in the month of July. We have one meeting in December where we meet on the first Monday. That's the reorganization meeting, that's also a board meeting. We've done some different things over the years. You know, we've met on Tuesdays, we've gone to, you know, the second, third Tuesdays, and that, particularly when we get in January and February around Martin Luther King Junior Day and President's Day, because school is not in session on those days. That does create conflicts with some of our board directors with other meetings that you have as well as throughout. So we're going back to something we did a long time ago. Some of you may remember this. We actually met on the first and second Mondays in January and February. And so we're going to go back to that. And then that will prevent some of those conflicts that exist for other, other boards or other assignments that board directors have. So we'll go with the first and second in January and February for next year. Okay? So we need a motion on to approve that, have a motion on, and we'll need to prove that next week as well, then we'll get those dates published. All right. Board Treasurer and Secretary Elections. So the treasurer election, this is something that we do every year. Again, you know, Mr. Benson recently appointed his 50-year term on the Joint Authority. This, however, is only a one-year term for treasurer, and all this is determined within school code, and it also depends on the size of your school district, about who can be treasurer, who can be secretary and the like. So we will be recommending that Mr. Benson for treasurer for that one-year term. And for Board Secretary, Mrs. Hens, that is a four-year term. They happen to be at this point right now, but that would be from July 1, '25 to June 30 of '29.
Wow.
So we will have motions on, actions on, to elect the Board Treasurer and Board Secretary. We do have some policies on for final adoption. These are ones that we talked about last month. So all of these have been on the table. 209, 213, 225, 226, and 823 will be on for final approval then next week. We have two other policies to be placed on the table, and Dr. Bosman, these are minor changes to social events and class trips and student recruitment. Student recruitment occurs, refers to the recruitment of students by military recruiters. These are policies. We still have some policies that we haven't, that are actually from the 2003, that just haven't come up for revision. We have other policies that we probably touched half a dozen times in the last, you know, five years. That's just how it is, and other ones we've added. But we're trying to get through some of those as we just make sure that we at least touch each of them and say, okay, it's still good, maybe needs some minor changes, and that's the case that these are in. So do you want to just address that real quickly there?
Yeah, so under 231, social events and class trips, some minor wording there just to basically talk about events that are approved and both facility usages that have been approved. That's really the only change there. The rest of the policy remains the same. It was just some clarification that both the events and the uses of facilities would have been approved. And then for 250, student recruitment, there was the adding of, they're not like bullet points, but it'd be the third and fourth section or items under guidelines. And unfortunately, PSBA did not have updated recommendations, so did a little research of other districts that have had newer revisions. So we included the two items. Basically, the third bullet point was about providing the list of graduating seniors, which we have to make available, and then also that military recruiters and other members of active military, including retired, can wear their military uniforms while on district property. So there's both, there's law and code to support those items, so those two, like bullet points or items, were added under guidelines. So minor revisions.
Okay, thank you. Any questions about, about policy and management? Okay. Pupil Services and Food Services.
I have two items under here for food service. The first one is equipment bid process. Emily is looking at purchasing some equipment just to replace because of age, equipment to prove with the general fund proposed final budget. So we'll present a list of equipment in that budget, and this would be included under that fund, food service fund. Included is a reach-in warmers, coolers, double-stacked ovens, a steamer, as well as a holding cabinet. Bid timeline we're looking at is advertising, May 25th, June 1st, and the 8th, those are Sundays. And then the bid opening is scheduled for either June 12th or the 13th. I don't think they finalized the date, but then we're looking at, God bless you, we're looking at awarding the bids on June 16th then. So we would like for authorization to go out to bid, so that will be on for next week. And then I have one other item, which is a summer food service program. The summer 2025 meal distribution period is July 7th to the 14th, provides meals to the district program at Union Canal. So the programs that are being held at Union Canal will also have this, this meal distribution presented to them. So we'll ask for your approval of the program is, Emily does have it set up the same way that she's had it in the past. And that concludes my items.
Good. Thank you. Mrs. Hens, do we have any questions about any of those items?
If futures stuff in essence part?
No, this is just, it's just a cycle that she has to replace some of the equipment, but it is not, there's other equipment in addition to what we're getting.
This is just maintenance, replacement of other equipment that we have throughout the district. Okay, any other questions? All right. Our next item is Technology and Transportation. We do not have any items in this area this month. So do we have any questions from any of our board directors about any of the items that we have discussed, presented this evening? Okay. Do we have any questions from anyone in attendance about any of the items that we've discussed or presented this evening?
Anything you say can do it all.
Hopefully, you got an education here tonight. This is, this is the business side of the, of a school district, right? Okay, yep. Good, yeah. All right. That concludes our items, Mr. Zug.
Well, thank you, Dr. Dmentsik, and thank you all for your thorough reports. We do appreciate your very much time and doing all the work.
Sorry, I'll start over now. Thank you, Dr. Dmentsik. Thank you all for your thorough reports. We do appreciate it very much. At this time, I'd like to announce that we will have an executive session for the purpose of student discipline and personnel. So at this time, I will entertain a motion for adjourn.
Who do we adjourn?
First and a second, so the meeting is adjourned.
All right, nice job.